Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm going to call the village board meeting to order. Please silence all cell phones during the meeting. I look for an approval of the agenda. I move to approve again.
Second.
Well, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments on items not listed on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. Please keep your comments three minutes. Dolph, you wanted to say something right now?
Yes, I do. One of the bright lights in this community just died in the last couple of weeks. And his name was Mark Ricker. And Mark was a four-letter athlete in the class. And it holds a Wisconsin record. Strikeouts in a baseball game. He was the pitcher. And in those days as today, high school basketball is seven innings. And Mark struck out 21 players in a seven inning game, mainly everyone. That record has not been equalled anywhere. He went on to play at Whitewater for a while and then did some tryouts for some major teams. But I just thought anybody who can strike out 21 out of 21 could get a notation here.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dolph. Okay, for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Corey said that because of medication.
We have a motion in second. Okay, item five, whole business. Consideration special ordinance twenty four dash zero four ten chapter three zero five municipal code of village. To revise and reorganize permitted and additional land uses by zoning jurisdiction. Define and redefine land uses and terms and conditions and make other related adjustments. So please follow your packet. You want to speak on this?
So if you recall, two board meetings ago, we held a public hearing on this zoning amendment. We had several short-term rental owners come in. I wrote down their feedback and went back, made several revisions to the ordinance. And then last week I sent that out to everyone who who participate in providing feedback. I sent that out on Tuesday and as of today, I've not received any negative feedback about the revised ordinance. So I think, I believe I have incorporated all of their kind of concerns and come up with a good solution. So I, in the memo on page twelve, I summarized. I won't go into each one of them unless somebody has a question. But I think hopefully this revision is acceptable and we can move forward with getting this zoning amendment completed.
In the first version, if the building was sold, they have to start over.
Correct. So I changed the language to say unless instead of until. So let me get there one second here.
Well, it's the bottom change to our.
I don't read the actual language I included. So now it says, a tour slapping license shall be automatically void upon the sale or transfer of the property ownerships or any fractional ownership interest in the property, unless the new owner obtains a new or altered license. So basically, we're willing to give the new owner that license, but they need to come in and threaten it for it, which I think solves the issue and also it should not be as big of an issue too, because we're not capping them. So even if for some reason you sell the property and you didn't get that arranged, they can come and get it and they'll be fine.
And.
Second.
We have motion second and any further discussion? Any not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carries. Item six, new business. Consider raise discussion resolution. Funds and certification of match fund secured. It's thirty-five in your packet? You want to tell senior?
Yeah. So as part of the library grant application, they have been putting together a budget for the project and determine that some additional funds are needed from the village to help complete the total project budget. That project budget is included on the next page, page thirty-six. So that includes a pretty detailed kind of breakdown of how we came to these numbers. You'll see the town hall property as well as the Swiss church property. The library board is requesting that the village contribute $500,000 to the library project. This is significantly less than the, you know, million that was way back when the referendum that approved. And then last year, the CIP actually had two million being contributed to the library project. So the library board is actually only requesting $500,000 to go for this project to help meet that gap in financing. And in order to show that amount on the grant application, they need this resolution passed. So happy to answer questions. And then we obviously have some representatives from the library as well here.
And if five hundred thousand, if the grant is given.
Correct, correct.
Any discussion? I move to a rule resolution five four fifty.
We're going to have discussion after the motion.
After the second. After the second, yeah, then we can have discussion.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, now discussion.
First item on the dimension list shows site acquisition of five hundred thirty house. It concerns me that we're paying ten cents on the dollar to the church. That picture up there is what we expect out of Swiss church. And we're giving them. I recognize that when it first started, they put it in, but the way they're operating, they have to have a meeting of their, of their consistory and then they make a recommendation and then they have two weeks notice. And I just think that, oh, that's, so that's paragraph one. Paragraph two is we give a value for the building. That that's what we were buying, but the reality is we're going to tear the building down. So the building is worth nothing. In fact, it costs us fifty thousand to tear it down. So what we're really looking at here is that we're paying $500,000 for thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of space, which is a price per square foot of forty dollars and seventy-four cents. And we turn around and buy the piece next to it and we're paying four dollars and twenty-four cents a square foot. And you can say, well, they're different pieces of land. I think this is an argument that Lauren makes that they're very different. One has frontage on the street, all that kind of stuff. I couldn't, I, I have to agree with their different parts of the land, but the reality is that the five hundred thousand for the thirteen thousand square feet ain't going to happen if they don't get the eight thousand feet to go with it. Because that's where all their parking is. You can see all those recommendations in here about how much they're going to do for parking. So I just find it disquieting that we're offering one entity in town, four dollars a square foot. And the other entity, forty dollars, because they were more aggressive at the table.
Can I speak to that? One of the properties, one of, one of the properties is viable to sell like for, to anyone and the other one isn't.
You can make that argument, doesn't change the fact that our purchasing property, one was dependent on property two.
So you'd rather pay the church more?
Well, yeah, I haven't.
I think.
That's right out here.
The difference is Dolph, we're buying property with a building on it and that's, I know what you're saying, but if that was just bare property, you'd probably be paying that four dollars and something a square foot.
No.
Why not?
Because they wouldn't sell it for that.
Well.
I just, you can, we can argue this thirty ways to Sunday. The reality is we're paying one entity forty dollars a square foot and we're paying the other one ten cents on the dollar. And to me, that's just not reasonable. You want to know where it's going to come from? Maybe we should move to the second part of the conversation, which is this building is geared to a determination by the library association as to what this community needs in 2049. And of all the buildings I've built, the only one that I ever made a mistake on was when I built it too big. And of all the buildings that I've been associated with, the ones that were built too big paid a fearful price over years. And what we're looking at here is I've checked around with communities that have a standalone library and their overhead, insurance, utilities, maintenance, all that kind of stuff. If you're in Belleville, it's eighteen percent of your, of your budget. If you're in some other communities that have older buildings, it's fifteen percent. So if you take that number and put it on the budget that Daniel's running here, that's close to fifty thousand dollars. Now, our constraints, if this were municipality, are that we can raise taxes by three percent a year. So if you take their budget, this is basically all of the increase that they're going to get for 2025 is nine thousand dollars. That's it. And you got fifty thousand over here. And you got that for X number of years. We have a brief window that might solve some of our problems when the brewery comes off the line and there's no, that their taxes come in here. But that's just one window. And what it boils down to is when you all make the decision about how big this building is, you're telling these people to pay for it. That's how it works out. Because the biggest item of any budget in the library, it's seventy percent of their budget is sales. So if you tell them they've got to come up with fifty thousand dollars more, it's coming out of compensation. And I just think that's no way to treat staff. They work hard. They deserve our respect. And running a building at ten thousand square feet is for twenty forty-nine. I mean, this discussion about building for the future and all that kind of stuff has been going on for a couple of decades. Every building I've built, the architects would say, well, you got to build it bigger to account for the future. I say, no, no, we're building up for what we need today. And guess what? Twenty years later, we're still in it. We figured out how to make it happen. And that's true right next door. We've been told for years, this is too small a building, but the reality is we're still in it. So my sense of this is let's figure out from this, oh, the other part I think is interesting is while it's three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build it, it's five hundred and forty-eight dollars a square foot when it's finally built. In other words, there's a sixty percent of this, of this cost is in construction. It's forty percent of it is in the overhead that goes with this. So if we're going to both take into account the two entities that I'm, that I've got on the table, one is the church and the other is the employees of this community, our employees here in the village, then we ought to say, do something to this, it gets them down. Now, what's the good news? The good news is we got these guys doing this. They can make whatever change you want and have it here by morning. So, but I just think this is more than we need. And and the cost comes out of people that shouldn't have to pay for it. Doesn't come out of the taxpayers. It's out of employees.
I have a question. I don't know who's going to be the answer. Maybe Daniel or Amy. So when the issue came up about buying the church property, did we offer them that price or did, did they come up with that price later?
I can tell you how we came up with thirty-five thousand. Lauren had an estimate done of the building and property of the township is on. The lot was costed at sixty-five thousand and the building about a hundred and thirty-five. So we took the sixty-five thousand, divided it by the number of square feet of the town hall lot. And that's what we're paying the church. But that is not the market here, market value of the property. The two realtors said it could be anywhere from, they guessed it would go about four hundred thousand if they put it on the market and sold it. So why are we paying five hundred thousand? Because we're getting a grant for four point two five million if it goes through. We're willing to pay that extra hundred thousand to the township because the grant will cover much more than we expected.
Yeah.
So that's the reason we're paying.
So you, why are we not paying your church anymore?
We're paying him a fair price that was estimated by an assessment of the properties without the building.
And the church could have pushed back.
Yeah.
Please, please, please.
Okay, hold on.
They have restraints on what they can do and when they do it. And you're talking about them as though they were aggressive about how they manage their, their finances. All I know is they're getting ten cents and people who don't even have residency in this, in this village are getting a hundred cents. That's all I know.
But not all church members have residency here either. I mean, I think your, I think your argument about, you know, the, the square footage of the library affecting, you know, staff and our taxpayers. And I can't speak to square footage library. I know nothing about that. But I think giving the church more money after we already have an accepted offer is a direct hit to our taxpayers. Because eventually that is going to trickle down to our taxpayers.
We do not care the same value.
It's all loving money. I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
You guys talk at all about what your, so I think the interesting part of the conversation is the cost after the fact, you're doing additional fundraising, I'm assuming for those things, correct? Like you'll be doing fundraising campaign, down roads, some kind of endowment campaign, like there be other thing to bridge that gap for you guys? Then you'll at least attempt, correct?
So for the first two years, I got twenty thousand dollars. I calculated the Green County funding through twenty twenty-seven. We'll get an increase of about ten thousand dollars every year. There's formula that goes with it. So it's not a guarantee, but based on all the numbers we've had in the past, we're beginning to ten thousand dollars. For in, so that'll look operating costs. Any funds that come in that we raise later will be endowed, endowed in fund to help the operating costs. What else was there? And we do plan to continue to look to Exeter, Washington and the town of New Lares, see what contributions we can get towards fundraising or towards operational costs in the future as well. We also have fifty thousand dollars in operational reserves that we're not spending and are not going into rebuilding campaign funds. So we have those excess dollars to make up any gaps that occur early on. And then we do, we still need as well. So that can be used for those gaps as well. But ideally, what we're going to be doing is fundraising for the endowment fund in order to make sure that we have enough operational money to cover the future.
In Belleville, the library is under an MOU.
What's that?
We're in Lundersailing.
And that means what?
That means the village is concerned and they have an agreement with the library board as to what they're going to do. And the first thing they say that they can do is spend down their reserves.
Okay.
And the reason for that, which I've talked with the Belleville industry, that they have a very large reserve and their village board wanted, didn't want it to keep increasing their budget and they wanted them to spend down their reserves. So that's the reason why they're spending down their reserves.
That and they had an issue with, when they decided, they put a lot of expensive. They put a lot of twenty thousand dollars worth of upkeep through the course of each year, which is expensive, which they're planning on not doing with this library. HVAC door locks, locks all need to be updated on a regular basis and it's very expensive. Things tend to be updated on a regular basis that are expensive. God, I'm having a problem. Correct. Okay. Didn't, wouldn't this have been a correct? This is what happens every time we get close to a library. Somebody comes up with something they don't like and then it all falls apart.
Look at paragraph two, your convention states. Twenty twenty-four, new library space. These guys have been projecting these spaces since I don't know when. I mean, they're just continuously out there saying, this is what you have to have. Yeah, I've seen a proposal from the same organization which came to me within the last year, which says that eight thousand square feet is the right size.
Okay.
Same, same organization, it's just which piece of paper you pull out. And the, the reality is that the bigger you build, the more complicated things become. And it always comes out of the employees. Because they're the only entity that's flexible. I mean, nothing else is. And I think that's, it's pretty important that we be as fair as we possibly can with our system.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want. I'm just saying, the argument is the smaller because it's easier for us to manage and to be fair with staff on a long-term basis. The church thing is a separate issue. It's just not, to me, I mean, I recognize there's a potential for you to say, you're talking on both sides of your mouth. That wouldn't be the first time I've done that. This is what we expect out of our, out of Swiss church, is that picture right there. And well, it's a, it's a big response. Or on the other hand, I want to, what are the best thing we can do for?
I got it. Because I don't remember anymore. How many square feet are you in now?
We're in eight, the footprint for the new building would be ten thousand square feet. We have nine thousand square feet of usable space. And incorporated in this design is a study room, two study rooms, small meeting room and place for programming. Part of this framework is to increase the available technology and the ability to have, have patrons, have the ability to use that technology to do things like job interviews, Zoom meetings, educating things online, help church appointment online. If we have those, people can't do those things and we don't. In our libraries, all of the users are in all of the space. The brand is increasing our technology in those ways. So that's.
And we have people stopping all the time asking, do you have a space where I can take this phone call? Do you have a space where I can do this? I mean, we had to kick somebody out of the men's bathroom at one point because he was holding Zoom calls in there. I'm not kidding. So it's a desirable thing in the community because there's nowhere else. That's private.
So the village is planning on contributing a million dollars and now they're planning on five hundred thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The other thing that we've got to take into consideration is all your programming is done in the community. So you're going to add, you know, you got two thousand square feet there, but you've got, you've got to figure, you've got to have room for the program sites, which adds former square feet are in that room back there. And a lot of times I'm sitting in, having discussions with Lauren and there's what, eight, ten, fifteen, twenty families come in with kids to this programming. I mean, you can't, you can't just go off the square footage that they're using for books and, and computers. You got to have that extra area for programming besides.
And this building is way too small for everything that's in it right now. I mean, we are overflowing with stuff.
I'm all in. Who was the one who suggested we double? Who was, you know, I've been in on this library. So that doesn't mean I don't have concerns about how we're doing this and how can we get the best result? And I'm forty-nine, I'm extremely so dead. The reality is, it's the next year and the year after that. That's where the stuff really comes to bear. And I see it in buildings around me. You only have to look at our golf course to realize it builds it twice as big as it should have. It almost sank the damn thing. We literally, it did. And those whole, that whole big space now is basically bare. Nothing up there. So building big is risky. Building small, the most you can say is it's annoying that we built it that small. You know, I wish this were another foot, you know, I wish I had a little bit wider garage. Reality is you should make it work on a longer basis.
If you build it too small, the worst isn't that you're trying, the worst is you can't provide the facility.
Peggy, Peggy wanted to.
Yeah, well, somebody else want to speak first? Just a minute, Peggy.
Yeah, I was muted for a while. So I've been wanting to say a couple of things. First of all, you know, I've been on this journey with the library for a really long time. And I have to say over time that I have more than one foot in golf camp for this, only because I, we have gone round and round about being able to manage, being able to manage your facility without having to draw or request from the community over and over year after year that we just cannot handle our budget. So I, I have, it is a library, but what we're looking at is a very myopic vision here. We're looking at programming. But it is a library. It offers, you know, online services. It offers classes for people as well. So I don't know if we want to, you know, just continue to focus on that because that's pretty expensive to focus on, you know, our children's programming, if that's the only thing. I can see, I, I definitely can see where we probably would need something more than like six or seven. But I have to be able to be assured that your budget can handle this kind of footage. Thanks.
Amy? Yeah, there's just one thing I wanted to mention. Amy and I talked about it tonight, actually. So just because grants, those grants will go in next week. That does not mean that we need to stop writing for grants. There are probably thirty grants that would support some kind of piece of a library. And we can easily take this grant language, not have to recreate the wheel, take this grant language and spend the next year submitting additional grants, but then we can reallocate some of the funds. And maybe that's the village funds, maybe that goes in the endowment. There are plenty of additional grants we can submit for in this time with this language, with this budget. We've already done work. I mean, it doesn't mean grant writing has to stop. We can literally put in to get additional things in and kind of shore up some of that financing on top of fundraising and those other things.
I'm all in on grant business for specific things. I'm really concerned when you tell me grants are doing operating. That's the trouble.
Well, they're doing capacity building we could use for staffing.
They've got, they've got all kinds of things that are out there.
Sure.
But if you keep pushing the burden back on staff to come up with more money, I just think, I, I, this is just a conversation I just heard me within the last couple of weeks. The time whatsoever on library work I'm doing. I made my point.
Operating budget? You, you guys think you're within an operating budget that you can stay?
So the last operating budget increases on twenty-one with thirty-five thousand. And I'm still waiting on some numbers to come in yet. I'm at thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty. So that's almost a factor, an dollar increase from time to time. Numbers.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm still waiting on some of these things and I'm getting additional some of the. Of the third because that we're looking at as well. So I think that it would be doable.
Is there a ballpark of what you think the increase?
Increase of probably about one thousand dollars is what I'm thinking.
Okay, so you're saying the increase.
Yeah, is that what I'm thinking. Shortest of the numbers that I. Keeping the original staff as long.
And just to be clear, your operating budget right now is what?
It is two. Four oh seven for this year.
And then three percent times that is roughly nine thousand. So next year, three ten.
So you guys look at these numbers, wait.
And wages are seventy five percent of that. That that's the whole. Isn't a lot of room on those wages.
Okay, so it's safe to say that if we don't get this grant, it would make sense to shrink the library.
Every every square foot is a savings in electricity and air conditioning. And I can, you can overwork this thing, needless to say. But if you can. You you want the thing to thrive on a long term basis. There's there's no question about that. All this stuff about all these parents come in. And and all the things that you're looking at in the headlines about how kids are being inundated by. Um social media, you know, there are lots of small over the place on social media. Literally, eight hundred school districts, forty eight states.
What does this have to do with the library?
Library provides resources to parents, children, so they learn how to deal with the influx of social media.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's, but we got a school district that provides a computer for every kid, right?
Yeah.
But there's this other resource that we need to be able to apply. And I think the library is that place.
Okay.
I mean, I think you hear this. Community unless you have a library. Post office. Well, okay, that's just not too funny, but the reality is on this social media stuff, library is a big resource.
Okay.
Daniel. Um. You know.
Whatever word and and. Play aware that, you know, Amy broke Eric or making painfully little. Over the years of. Eighteen thousand, fourteen thousand for the library. It's it's a very important topic for us to make sure that we can operate this reasonably. Um ten thousand square foot library is. Yeah, it's it's big compared to what we have now, which is not very much. But it's not that big of a building when you consider it's a lot to have bathrooms. And like just point out really, you know, a programming room or a first plating is going to be used for other things. Um, sorry, I want to I want to just say is that. Ten thousand square foot, eight thousand square foot. I don't think that's really gonna. Yes, it'll be, there'll be difference. But I don't think so it's gonna be. A little. We're happy to be flexible, you know, that's. We're not, this this more than we have is under we all recognize that you've got this operating protocol, operating budget. Want to make sure that we're tackling it head on and still getting the library. That's not a new bill for thousands of requests. I think that that's a waste. Try to do construction and spend that kind of money and stop outside and have that kind of library. I know there'll be suggestions for that. But how are you going to be able to operate it with her level capacity?
Well, I'm not sure why we're having this discussion now because if we get a grant. We're gonna save the community somewhere between a million and one million five hundred thousand to cover. Operating expenses for as long as we're any of us are living. But if we want to have this discussion after, if we don't get a grant, I think we would. Have a change of the dollar, it makes no sense.
I do just want to add in one thing about the two million dollar. Back would be capital money. Um we can't just levy more. The library needs more for operating. We get a setback from the state to work with to let to fund all of our different, you know, PD administration library. So just because we only gave five hundred thousand versus two million, that doesn't mean we have one point five million left that we can. Then designate to operating costs. It would have to be a capital project cost. So that's the one clarification I want to make.
But cheaper is still better.
Oh, one one last question. Um so um the the grants is for. Million two hundred fifty thousand, correct? And your uh total construction costs, the middle of the page is five billion two hundred and seventy thousand. But where is the million coming from?
So if you look to the bottom, total costs are five, five million.
I I understand the word, what you're asking us is to fill the gap between five two seven and a lot higher seven five. We got that. Where is the difference between? Five, four point two five oh and five point two seven oh, where?
Give a million, a million and a quarter.
So you're part of me dead.
They're spending that on construction or whatever the grant isn't going to cover. So there are certain things that maybe you can allow us.
I that's what I thought, but I just wanted to show a second.
Okay.
Okay, you have emotion in a second. I moved to. We got motion in a second. Vote time.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Two. She froze it.
Uh opposed. Passes.
Okay.
Such as fools up there.
Maggie, can you hear us?
No, here in the um you were, I, we have a motion and that's all I heard. Now you just.
We had motion in a second and then I called the vote. So.
And to approve, to approve as is?
Yes.
I'm going to say no.
Okay, so we got. And one, you go, you're down to.
Yep.
Okay, five and two.
Yeah.
I didn't say it was public works and things would take too much to get a positive vote up. This isn't quite it, but it doesn't take too much to get the supporting the website and facts.
Yeah.
They consideration discussion order twenty four dash their weight to win section two eighty eight dash twenty one. Reading. Is that? The Z of the municipal code of the village New Glares parking regulations. That's on thirty eight of your pack.
Pretty straightforward. This was recommended by the public works committee to limit parking on the north side, Third Avenue between Sixth and Eighth Street. This came from a request from the Glares Bible Church during their services. It gets pretty tight on that street. And they've been putting out temporary no parking signs out there and they're just asking for permanent no parking.
I think it would make it much safer. But if they weren't encouraged for all of them.
Just the between Sixth and Eighth.
That's their whole field too. That's basically all their property.
Yeah.
Okay. But I've been there on Sundays when their church gets out and yeah, there's. They park across the street. So there's kids and family going across and if you get tired. On the north side, it blocks. And so it it make it a lot safer. So I moved to that. Order twenty four all week.
There's a reason why people park on that north side, right?
Well, they had one to church.
So do they have enough parking locations here for that?
The request came from the church.
Right, and they park all along. Park across the street, they own property.
And are all those locations utilized?
They are.
Still overflowing on the streets.
Very busy.
So that what are people going to be parking?
Where they park on the street, they'll park across in the field in the red.
So past that eighth street, are there down?
Or anywhere on the south side of.
Is there any downside of doing this? Parking by the Bible Bible church, yeah. Okay, not a really busy area for anything other than a church, correct? Okay, okay.
No.
So you made a motion?
Yes, please. I made a motion. Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Peggy, did you hear that motion?
Yeah, uh hi. I said it behind my.
Motion carry. Okay, moving on to personnel finance. This is consideration discussion eighteen months. Page thirty nine. Nelson, Nelson.
I can handle it. Um so we have a six month CD expiring next week. Um we invested hundred fifty thousand as of recently. Does it make me that intense?
When the CD closes.
Somewhere.
We'll have about a hundred and fifty five thousand.
Yeah, hundred fifty four oh six six. Um I got bids from our three local banks and um. I already lost my bank, I believe bank New Glares had the highest. Thank you. At five point oh one percent, finance and personnel reviewed this at their last meeting. I recommended moving forward with Bank of New Glares. I just wanted to clarify with the board uh that you would like me to invest the entire amount. Both the amount we originally invested and the interest into this new.
Looking at you, Goff. This is your department. Okay.
So need a motion to approve. Yeah, which bank?
Bank. Glares. Second.
And is that for a full amount with interest?
So the current of interest we got was about two point seven percent. So that five percent is going to be almost double. We're getting a little less this time.
Yeah, we got five point four percent.
For six months. Oh, for six months, yeah, you're right. Now we're putting it in for eighteen. Uh but I think we're going to have one coming to every.
Six months.
Five percent is good. What are we at? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh item B, consideration discussion, public works and utility direct.
Alright. Um so the personnel and finance committee started this discussion, um but I'll just give a quick overview again. Um emailed out a memo on this. Um so Joe will be leaving village later this month. And so this creates an opportunity to kind of brief and figure out what will work best for the village and the utility. Um so what I'm proposing is actually splitting up the public works and utility roles of. That current position. Works director would only handle streets, parks, stormwater and wastewater. And that we would elevate a utility staff member to manage the water and electric utility. So that's kind of the gist of the proposal. Um I think this will help with rehiring the public work structure. It's a little bit less off their plate. Um also overseeing an electric utility especially requires a lot of experience and training that is difficult to hire for. Um and is also just a lot uh more difficult to manage if you're not experienced in that area. Um so on page two, you can see a proposed organizational chart. On how this might look. See, see the utility tractor is over the electric water and our utility office manager. And then the public works directors over the labors and the wastewater plant. Um so the uh finance and personnel reviewed this and they recommended moving forward with split. Um there was some discussion on how we do the funding break. Um and they requested some further discussion on that piece. Um so I I guess today I'm looking for action on if you're okay with the split. Because I would like to move forward with hiring the public work structure as soon as possible. Um and then I'd also love some feedback on. Potential use of additional utility dollars. We can still figure out the, you know, amounts. Uh but. I had two kind of wage uh adjustments proposed that I I think I would like some feedback on as well. So. That was a lot of information. So just fire away with any questions or comments.
Well, tell me again, we have four. Utility operations, right? Electric, water. And those are regulated, right?
Yes.
And then we have wastewater.
And storm.
And storm. And those are not regulated.
Correct, by P S E.
Yeah, right.
I mean, technically wastewater is regulating the, or the D N R is regulating wastewater, but that's.
They're just measuring what's coming out the end, right?
There, yeah, they're looking at environmental.
They're they yell, so yell, okay, good. Okay. And and um so under uh public works director, that would include months or besides wastewater, right?
Correct.
With and what we've been doing. Re revisiting the ones we've got digging up streets, putting in new things. We've got an ongoing program with that.
Yeah, they maintain the inlets and, you know, clean them out and.
Yeah.
Do uh streets sweeping as well.
So you want, you're going to split up these instead of one, you're going to have two.
So it would still be the same number of staff. It would just be elevating one of our utility staff and then rehiring public works director with less. Responsibilities.
So in the long run, without me trying to figure this out, is that going to be the same cost, more money or cheaper?
I'm just wondering.
Technically.
These are the two funds.
Be more cost. So yeah, it will be more for the general fund. As it sits right now, less for electric and water in terms of what Joe's position is budgeted at now. And then more for wastewater and storm. But as we talked in personal finance, there may be other ways. Part of this budget process this year was going to be and is going to be looking at how we are allocated. Most of our positions here are allocated with a certain percentage to different areas. Um so my salary is allocated to different parts of the utility. And I don't think those allocations haven't looked at in a very long time. So we want to look at them. There may be other creative solutions to help make up that general fund gap. Uh but also, we also want to make sure that if we're taking a certain percentage out of the fund, that that fund is getting that percentage of work. I know what you're gonna say, Goff.
No, you don't know what I'm saying. I'm complimenting you. One, that's exactly what we should do. I I think we should approve the split, right? That that's what you need out of us today. And then you should, once you've given some more thought to this, you should schedule a executive. Is that what we call no closed session? So we can put this in the context of individual individuals.
Yeah.
Is that worth it?
I'm fine with that. I think um we would, I would like at least guidance on the wage increase for the utility director. Because that will be part of the split.
Yep.
Um so if you're comfortable with that, I think it would be good. I personally would also advocate for the wage increase of the utility office manager. Um we can revisit that again at another time, but I think that's one that. This this opportunity with additional utility dollars creates, and I think that is definitely one of our areas of need.
So what what this is the one, the part time we discussed.
No, that's the third one. Yeah, part, yeah, it's the third initiative here. I was talking about that and Bill.
That we do not now have anyone in this position.
We do.
We do.
In the utility office manager.
No, hard time.
Right, yeah, we're not talking about.
I'm saying let's revisit the part time position in the future, but I think the first two are needed.
We best does a ton for the utility in terms of the opposite side.
Two motions, right? One motion to split, the second to increase wages.
Uh yes, I I I will probably return with a solution.
Because and how this works out, I correct me if I'm wrong, but these, this elevation would not occur until, you know, after Joe leaves. Because Joe, we're technically still paying Joe the same allocation. So we'll have another board meeting before that happens where those. You'll see the wages again. It just gives us the direction to go in.
I would move to approve the two position, utility director and public works director with two specific position.
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
And then on the wage thing?
I'll bring it back if so. It sounds like the board is mostly.
Did you get the motion on? Please, please confirm. But, but I thought Larry was saying you want two separate motions.
I, I think I'll just bring it back to the next meeting as a resolution. So then we'll just. I think we have time. We just need a direction on like. Yes, yeah, I wanted to.
Okay, I'll do the president's report. I'm going to say, I got something I want to say. Uh, I work three mornings a week at the hardware store from seven thirty till noon. And I keep my phone in the car for a reason. I don't want anybody calling me at the hardware store. Want to call me on my phone and leave a voice? No, that's fine. But I don't want to be called at work. End of discussion.
If I have to talk to you, I'm going to come and order a bag of mulch. And you can put it in my car.
Now I'm one who called you at work.
I'm not saying. I'm just saying I'd rather not see it yet.
Okay.
That, anything else from the board?
I have one question.
Sure.
For when you post for the new public works spot, are you revamping your job description to include management experience? Maybe that, so that, yes, definitely. Okay, yeah. Yeah, all I.
I hear thunder.
I'm gonna, I'll like, after getting this feedback, I will definitely work on the job description. I'm happy to send it out to the board if you're interested in seeing it before posting. Um, yeah.
But you plan on doing that fairly soon?
Yeah, I will.
Let's see your long form, try.
I'm here tomorrow.
Or might be.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else on the board? If not, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Peggy.
Bye, Peggy.